This afternoon. And this is item F nine. We'll open this item up for public hearing and we're going to ask Mr. Jason Sorensen to come forward and frame this item. With that, Mr. Sorensen, you're recognized.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Commissioners. This next item is an adoption public hearing for an item. And this came before the board and local planning agency previously. We did send it to the state and we did not receive any comments back. So this is now the adoption round. This is a text amendment request to change the existing already approved development program from 20,000 square feet of commercial and 700 units of single family to 253 units of single family, keeping the commercial and adding 304 multifamily units. Associated with this request is also a PD substantial change to the Sutton Lakes PD. It is a multi-part request here to add multifamily as an allowed use and revise the development program, remove a previous condition of approval, limiting building height along the lake to one story, and revising the access points. And there are three waivers associated with the request. The subject property is located in District One. This is an aerial of the subject property showing it on the east side of Avalon Road and north of West Earl Bronson Memorial Highway. This is the existing future land use map designation. It's growth center planned development, commercial, medium density residential. And the zoning is PD, no change to that as well. So in Policy 8.1.4, this is where we record the development program. This is the existing development program for the property. And this is what it is changing to. So the single-family units are reducing by 447 units and we're adding multifamily 304 units. And again, this is an aerial of the subject property, a little bit more zoomed in. I'm overlaying, or this is the land use plan. And then overlaid on top of the aerial is the land use plan, just so you can get an idea of what's happening here. You have commercial along Avalon Road, along with the stormwater pond. The multifamily that's proposed would be a little bit more internal to the site. And then otherwise, they're single-family attached and detached, proposed. Along the lakes, though, it would just be single-family detached. Again, associated with the request is the PD substantial change to revise the development program, remove a previous condition of approval that limited the building height to one story along the lake, and request waivers. These are the waivers. Multifamily requesting four stories, 55 feet, within 100 feet of single family in lieu of one story. And the second waiver is four stories, 55 feet, in lieu of three stories, 40 feet. And then the last waiver is to remove a wall requirement between multifamily and single family, and that's internal to the PD. 710 Public Hearing notices were sent to an area extending beyond 1,500 feet from the subject parcel. To date, we have received one response in opposition and no responses in favor. A community meeting was held on February 28th, 2023, with three residents in attendance expressing concern for traffic, too many apartments in the area, protecting the lake, and flooding. At the Planning and Zoning Commission Local Planning Agency hearing, there were no speakers. The Planning and Zoning Commission Local Planning Agency is recommending that the board make a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan and approve, adopt the future land use map amendment or text amendment, the associated ordinance, and the Development Review Committee is recommending approval of the Sutton Lakes PD substantial change. And staff is available for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Is the applicant on this item present? If so, would you like to come forward and offer any comments?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Chuck Widdell, Unicorp National Development, 7940 Villa Delagio Way, Orlando, Florida, 32819. We agree with staff's recommendations, and we've been up here working on this two years. And I'd like Jennifer just to give a very quick history of the approvals. I don't want to spend a bunch of time on it today if it seems like everybody's in the right direction on this, but Jennifer.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Stickler, Kimley Horn, 189 South Orange Avenue. Just to reiterate what Mr. Widdell was saying, that yes, we've taken the PD to DRC, as y'all are aware, which is why we're here today. We've been to the local planning agency and received recommendations for approval at a six oh vote. And we've also been working diligently with staff in regards to the potential pond that would be on this site to provide the stormwater treatment and attenuation needed to widen Avalon Road, as shown on the PD. They've identified this site as an area they would need to do that. So we've had about six-plus meetings with staff to coordinate and go through drainage calculations with them. Here to answer any questions.
All right. Well, stand by. Do we have members of the public present who should be hearing on this item?
No speakers for this item, Mayor.
All right. Then we'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll go to the district commissioner for a potential motion.
I have questions. I know this was something that came up before Transmittal, and I've continued to try to piece together the history. And just to sort of reiterate, I know Jennifer went through the more recent history, but if I could ask staff a couple of questions. 2014, the PD was approved with what entitlements?
I'd have to research that, Commissioner. I don't know off the top of my head.
Those are the existing ones. So if there was a submitted change from that, wouldn't that be part of the evaluation?
Yes, sorry.
For whether or not that was appropriate?
Correct. So in 2014, you can see here, the ordinance number 2014-30, this was the program that was recorded in our future land use policy 8.1.4.
Okay. And at that time, there were conditions of approval. So here we are. So that's 2014, different board, Commissioner Boyd was here, entitlements went through, including 700 homes at the end of Avalon Road. Not even at the end, somewhere in between. Here we are, all these years later, trying to navigate that area. And I know you all have become, unfortunately, very familiar with Avalon Road and the troubles that we have and people's safety issues and concerns. So my question is, and I understand that part of the applicant's presentation described their efforts. What has staff done? To make a staff recommendation of this type of intensity and density, what has staff done to accelerate what I feel like is a very dangerous stretch of Avalon Road there? Or is there some other access point to 192 that I can't see from this map?
So Commissioner, I'm just double-checking here. I believe the trips are actually a decrease in the number of trips from what's currently allowed on the roadway. So it would be a decrease in the number of trips.
And you're saying what was allowed based on the 2014 approval of that intensity and density?
Correct.
Okay. So then, the follow-up question I have to that is, there was a condition of approval. And I think, you know, understanding, and we've all been there as commissioners, where conditions of approval are sometimes at the specific request of impacted neighbors. Presumably, this one was impacting the neighbors right on that lake. Now, to the south of this parcel, I have talked to a resident. They are on acre plus. It's very rural residential. And looking right across that lake right now, they see cypress trees, they see a lot of vegetation. Looking at the condition of approval that was put in place in 2014 that allowed them the comfort of knowing that there wouldn't be two-plus stories over there, as you can see, there are waivers, they want to take back that condition of approval now, and they want waivers for height for the rest of the buildings. So can you speak to that a little bit? What would, you know, to me feel like a betrayal of what was probably a promise to the neighbors there in 2014?
So the condition of approval you're referring to is the one-story along the lake. So that was actually done in 2003. There was a request for 900 homes at the time. So that was a condition of approval that was proffered up as part of the request for the 900 units.
Still the same families. Same families, same road, still very rural residential, that road to the south. So, you know, that was a promise made as a condition of approval. What made staff feel confident that that was no longer going to impact them?
Look, I'll let the applicant speak to...
No, this was a staff recommendation. It was a staff recommendation, which means there had to have an evaluation that staff made, that that was no longer going to be, that that was consistent with the comprehensive plan, because that's what your evaluation is for.
Correct, yeah. So they're proposing to do the same thing that those homes on the south side of Lake Rexford and Lake Scott could do, because those homes could go up to 35 feet. So, and there's no special restrictions placed on those properties?
Those are the established, that's the established neighborhood. Those are also one property per about an acre down there. Those are very, it's a very low density. So you're talking about close together and high, right? So I think the compromise sounds like, to me, back when this was originally negotiated and conditions of approval were put into place, was that, well, at least this, they won't be staring down into where we are across the lake. And now that is not important anymore? And what are any conditions of approval worth if we're allowed to come back in a couple of years and be like, we don't remember what the point of that was?
So Commissioner Nick Domula, Orange County Planning Division. I can answer a little bit of the history questions here. As Jason mentioned, that condition was from the very original approvals for this PD, date back to the early aughts. At that time, what was proposed along the lakeside was a timeshare product that was going to look like single-family homes. Through discussions with the homeowners out there, they were very concerned of what those were going to look like, and that's where the single-family, or the single-story came from. Later on, that request was converted from timeshare along the lake to single-family. However, that condition was just carried over and carried over, even though it's a different use.
Well, I mean, it's not. We're still talking residential, right? On the lake.
Many of those homes, all of those homes are able to go two stories. Any single home on that side of the lake...
They are already there.
Is also allowed two stories.
They're already there. That's different than coming with a higher-density product and having, I mean, there was entitlements for it, the number of products, right, the number of units, but not the height, and that was part of the condition of approval.
Well, I think the density along the lake is staying as it always was. The multifamily is the area that's increasing the density.
100% agree with you. What I'm saying is, why would we veer away from a condition of approval that brought some level of comfort to the people across that lake, that the aesthetic of their lake wouldn't change?
I'm just relaying what the thought was at the DRC. That condition was never intended for single-family homes. It was intended for a timeshare product. The committee had no issues with striking that. However, it, questions before the board.
Okay.
Commissioner, can I answer a couple of your questions, please?
Sure.
I did try to reach out to your office three times to meet, to discuss this, and was not met with a meeting, so I just want to put that in the record. It was timeshare. That was why the condition was put there originally, because it was going to be transient, people going in and out every day. It is now single-family. We should be afforded the same height as the other single-family on the lake.
Are you going to have the same distance setbacks?
The same distance setbacks from what? We're doing it per code.
So you're saying you want to match what's across from Lake Rexford?
No.
That's one house per acre with a, like, probably a 25-foot setback. Are we going to go ahead and put that in a condition of approval?
Yeah, that is a condition of approval already in here.
That they're going to have the same setbacks as the Lake Rexford?
We have a condition of approval for 100-foot setback. We are all the way across the lake, 125 foot. We're a half-mile away from the houses on the other side of the lake. All the houses on the lake are allowed two stories. All the houses on every lake in Orange County are allowed two stories. This is not an unreasonable request. The density is reducing. The density is, let me finish. The density is reducing, and also the cypress trees are staying. So they're still going to look at the same cypress trees. You said they're going away. They're not going away.
With all due respect, it's a promise that was made.
It was a promise made when it was timeshare.
No one is depriving anyone of any use here, right? So you already have an entitled use. No one is depriving anyone of their entitled use under the law. The question comes down to what the original entitlements were and why. There's a privately asked-for text amendment now. Now, our comprehensive plan, it should be comprehensive, and it should be stable and reliable for our residents. So when a privately requested update, a text amendment comes forward, we scrutinize it. That is our job here. And if there was a promise made in 2003 or 2014, it doesn't change my obligation to my residents, who have relied on that promise and who continue to rely on it. We put conditions of approval on things every time we meet. And if we no longer have any reliable promises, then we have nothing, right? So a comprehensive plan has to be comprehensive, and a condition of approval has to stick with land. So I think it's a reasonable question I'm having as to why we wouldn't stick with that condition of approval, knowing that there were others that carried through from 2003.
Well, let me answer that once again. First of all, my builder will not move forward with one story because it's not competitive to the market. Secondly, that request was tied to timeshare. Originally, the request was tied to timeshare.
That's not articulated anywhere in here.
If I can finish, I'll let you finish. And thirdly, I don't see one homeowner from across the lake who showed up to this. Nobody has come to us, nobody's contacted our office, nobody's come out, none of the residents came out. There was not one complaint about us doing a two-story product, which is going to be very nice, in Orange County.
What we articulate in our comprehensive plan and what we put in conditions of approval and what we have in our code isn't about mob rule. We follow those because those are the letter of the law.
Tied to timeshare.
So I understand, I understand you're saying, why am I asking about this? We don't have people standing here. It's because I've spoken to them, and I told them, I will express my concerns if you have concerns. I think the issue that you're trying to hammer down here is that that was a different product, therefore it should have different rules. We are still playing by the same rules. These were conditions of approval that were part of a PD, that you're asking to update the part of the PD that affects densities and intensities. I am asking very specifically about why that would impact the aesthetic for our neighbors there. And so I think, you know...
I think the neighbors, if they had a problem going from 800 timeshares down to residential across from them, if they had an issue with that, I think they would have shown up today. And also, the comment you made, that people are going to look down their windows into their houses, when you can look at the screen that's in front of you and see it's completely across the other side of the lake, is unrealistic. I just think these are invalid points that I wish we could have talked about a week ago, a month ago, a year ago.
We did.
I have not had the pleasure of meeting you one time on this project. I was blindsided today and was not going to mention that in my initial presentation. My secretary contacted your office three times for a meeting and was denied. I think this is an unreasonable thing that you're putting forward, that we would not be afforded two-story houses, when every single home throughout Horizons West and Avalon is allowed to be two-story.
This isn't in the Horizon West Village, so that's...
Wait, wait, wait. We've asked to make it like Horizon West, and we've implemented a lot of the Horizon West standards at the request of staff, trying to make it a better development. We're also providing land to expand Avalon Road, to make it an easier place to travel. We're working with the staff on the retention palm, which decreased the density of our development. I mean, we've had, how many meetings with staff? A dozen? I mean, we've worked on this for two years, Commissioner.
I understand that that is what you are doing as your business plan, okay? And I appreciate that, and I appreciate that you continue to articulate your business plan. It does not alleviate me of my responsibility to make sure that we're following our comprehensive plan and our code. And when it's something that can be scrutinized, which by the way, when we're updating our comprehensive plan, that is where we have the most opportunity to scrutinize this, we have to. So it's very generous of you to give us a little bit of Avalon Road, but it's a disastrous little one-lane right now. And so to pile on more multifamily development in this area, and I said this when we went to Transmittal, I was very concerned about it. I continue to be concerned about it. I do not think it's consistent with our urban planning and our, really, rural planning. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to deny...
Commissioner Wilson, Matt? Commissioner, I had a question before you make a motion. I just, I wanted to try to...
All right. There are several commissioners who've indicated a desire to speak, so I'm going to call them in the order they press the button. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Where'd Nick go? Okay, Nick, you can stay there. If Jason, if he can answer it, then that's cool, but if not. So I'm going to just kind of articulate what I understand. I'll come to you, Mr. Widdell, just for staff. So I make sure that I'm following this, because there's a couple of points. So 2003, there was an approval for 900 timeshare...
Yes, I misspoke. It was for timeshare, and the conditions of approval allude to that, because it does talk about lockout keys that were approved at the same time as the restriction to the one-story.
And was that Commissioner Boyd back at that time, or?
2003.
Priest Jacobson.
Okay, okay. Commissioners, I was just trying to, so 2000, so 2003, oh, hi Nick.
In 2003, the PD was approved for 100 detached timeshare units along the lakefront.
Where'd the 900 number come from?
That's just along the lakefront. The other units were spread out around the rest of the PD area.
Okay, so then we fast-forward a bit, and it gets approved for 700 single-family homes, right?
And some retail commercial, yes.
And some retail and commercial space, similar to what's consistent in the area, or no? Like, I guess what I'm saying is, is there any, in that retail commercial, is it separate or is it mixed-use? Like, would there be apartments on top of it, or just straight retail commercial?
Yeah, so apartment units, what we call in our technical speak, multifamily, for those out there, were never an allowed use within the PD. There were the timeshare, then there were the single-family, and then there is retail commercial uses. So it would be just anything that falls into that retail bucket, restaurants, drive-through restaurants, car wash, self-storage out there for everyone who loves those, but no multifamily.
And are all of the homes out there two stories, or some of them, it's a mix? I mean, I don't live in an area, so I'm not 100% sure. So are all of the homes two stories, or some of them, or just it's a mix based on design?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you. I can tell you that they're not all two-story. There's some sort of mix out there. There are at least some homes that were built to the maximum single-family allowance, 35 feet, which allows about two stories, and then many others built it single-story.
So community was okay in '03 with timeshares, which would be owners who kind of come and go as they please. Now we're moving to residential with people who live there full-time and... Okay, all right. Just want to make sure I'm tracking everything. I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Well, there was still community concern in '03.
But ultimately, that took shape.
Ultimately, the board approved, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Bonilla?
You know, I have to say that I don't think it's fair to tell them that they could only do one-story, single-family homes when just across, I don't know if there's any other restrictions across the county where we restrict people to a single-family, I mean, single-story, single-family homes. So, I mean, I understand, I think it's good and very important that we look at the conditions of approval over time and understanding how and why those were done, to make sure that we're staying within the parameters of the promises that were made to residents in the area. But even taking that into consideration, I don't think it's fair, I just don't think it's fair, to prevent them from having two-story, single-family homes. Now, if we want to talk about some other changes that were made that weren't there before, that's something else. But as far as that along the lake there, I just don't think that, at this point, that condition is valid anymore. I just don't. So that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Moore, and then Commissioner Scott has asked to speak again, and then Commissioner Uribe. So Commissioner Moore?
Okay, so I guess my question is to staff, if it's going from hotel 61 to 48 timeshare, but it's also requesting an additional 197 timeshare units, is that, or that was already there? I'm confused, I'm a little bit confused how the traffic counts would go down.
So this slide kind of captures what the change is, and this is the policy that records the development program associated with the comp plan and text amendment. So right now, they have single-family 700 units. They're changing that to 253 units. They're adding multifamily 304 units. So it's a decrease of 447, single-family, and an increase of 304, multifamily. So that's where it was determined that there is a decrease in the number of traffic trips.
Okay. All right, so it's a change in type from single-family to multifamily, but overall, the number of units has decreased?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Scott?
I just, again, Commissioner Wilson, because he made these comments, I do want to try to understand. The applicant stated he did try to reach out. Was there any particular reason why you couldn't or wouldn't meet with him?
Honestly, I think that assertion is totally bizarre. I meet with people all the time, every day, and even if I can't, I had, you know, a family emergency in May, you all know that.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for your, you know, being kind to me during that time. Even then, I will review anything I have. Nothing I'm saying now, I didn't say when this came through for Transmittal, I still have my concerns, but they continue to get worse, because we've had community meetings since then about accidents on Schofield, on accidents on Flemings. These are the only points of access in that area with absolutely zero plan from this county to do anything to accelerate those, to make them, you know, and I know the mayor's looking at me like that could have been part of our sales tax. But it's not, because quite frankly, a lot of those are agreements that we've made with the development community. So we're waiting on them for these types of agreements. So I did not refuse a meeting with Mr. Widdell. I would never do that. I think that if, you know, maybe we'll make sure you have all the correct contact information again. But you know, I mean, we were at a community meeting out there, and we talked about it. And I said, I'm very concerned about the increased intensity and density in these areas. People are very interested in commercial, because there hasn't been as much as the interest in multifamily. I'm really concerned about more kids in the schools. When this was tourist, we didn't have to think about the school situation. And right now, the closest elementary school is using the media center for two fifth grades. So these are all things that we know, they knew about.
And just one quick question, just because you just said something that triggered a memory in mind. So this was the issue before us several months ago, probably almost a year ago, we were here probably till eight o'clock at night, that you motion for denial, if I'm correct, for Transmittal. So this is the same issue? Okay, all right, I'm good, I'm up to speed.
It is, it's the same issue, and quite frankly, like, the more that I look at it, the more I think that it's a concern across the board. So, I mean, just to let you all know, they don't have any reclaimed water there, right? So they're going to be using fresh water to irrigate. Our drinking water, by the way, to irrigate, there's no reclaimed water there. So there's, there is, there is infrastructure issues in this area.
And again, for clarity, Commissioner, from that time, because that was almost a year ago, from that time until now, Mr. Widdell either threw, had the wrong phone and the wrong email, could not meet with you or your staff.
Well, I don't know if he start, I mean, listen, it was, first of all, it was January, I think, maybe February. But that's, I mean, we, he has a lot of activity in my area, so we've seen each other on other issues at community meetings and what have you. That is not, until this hits this agenda, by the way, I'm not...
Let's not go back and forth between those.
Well, my office, we did reach out three times.
Well, and I was going to say, I mean, you understand...
We did call, we did try to set up a meeting several times. I had her call three times. We documented it for this point alone, and we didn't get a return phone call, we didn't get a meeting. She called three times trying to set up a meeting, because I didn't want to be in this position today, and we tried to do it.
But I did not present anything new today. Like, this is not my, my concerns have been very similar, and there hasn't been any change on your side.
We meet school concurrency, we meet traffic, we are helping to widen the road, all the problems you're stating, we're helping fix those things. But yet you're saying we should be denied development. I mean, we have concurrency.
Because it's a Ponzi scheme, you're adding...
It's not a Ponzi scheme.
It is. If you're adding, you know, 1,000 new residents to an area that you're saying that it's okay, we're giving up this amount of right-of-way, that we're continuing to add to that density...
We're decreasing our entitlements. That's not a Ponzi scheme.
Commissioner Wilson, we do have two other commissioners, okay, that have questions. So I was going through it in the order in which they pressed the button. Commissioner Uribe?
Yeah, this, Jason, I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to bug you again, because there was a comment that made, and I was asking about the school concurrency. Do they have an approval from OCPS?
Commissioner, good question. Let me flip through it. I don't have that memorized off the top of my head, but, so here, capacity is available at the elementary, middle, and high schools.
Okay. And I just want to make a certain point here, too, because I know we've been dealing with a lot of issues in this area, where the development has clearly outpaced the infrastructure. But out of all, I mean, there's got to be a balance here, because to put this all on this applicant, because of what's going on all around, I don't think it's fair. That's my issue. And I understand your frustration, and we've heard your residents, but he has reduced his entitlements, he is contributing to the impact, the transportation impact fee that is required, and we're trying to say to him, no, we don't want you, because it's already bad, so you're just going to make it worse. want you, because it's already bad, so you're just going to make it worse, and I have trouble accepting that, because this isn't, this isn't new. This is every time there's a project in your district, your residents come here because the infrastructure is not there, clearly prior to you, prior to us, this was all entitled. But to sit here and say to him, well, we just don't want yours, when he's actually doing the opposite, he's not asking for a fair share. We did know about this case, he is, and I understand when you're saying there's not, you know, the kids in fifth grade are meeting, but OCPS signed off, so we can't sit there and say, hey, there's too many kids in fifth grade, they're meeting in the media center, so we're not going to. If OCPS signed off, we can't legally say, hey, we don't want more. I do believe that if you, and Jason, can you confirm, when you have hotel, timeshare, anything like that, you're going to get people who are coming in and out, because they don't live there, and they don't go to work, they're visiting, so they're actually going to incur more traffic on, on the roadways than less than somebody who's getting up, going to work, going to school, or whatever, than someone who's going to the grocery store, going to the parks, doing this, doing that for seven days, if we're lucky, 14 days, but three days, four days, is that not accurate?
I'd have to defer to maybe to something that's a little bit more transportation-oriented.
Joe?
Commissioner, just as a reminder, the 2014 Conference of Plan Amendment took away the timeshare, and it's currently entitled for 700 single-family homes. So both from a school and from a traffic generation perspective, this development is producing less kids and less cars on the road than what they're currently entitled to, so they're reducing both of those requests.
So we're taking, we're taking a reduction...
They are making a request to modify the program, which has a reduced school and transportation impact.
Okay, all right, my question's been answered, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bonilla?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I feel for you, because this isn't just an isolated incident, it's been, you know, and I hate to say this, but over the four years, we've had multiple developers come up and say they can't meet with you, and they can't reach out to your office and stuff, and they're actually not the only ones, there's also, I won't say who, but there was county staff actually trying to reach out to your office and wasn't getting any response. So it's, it's just been an ongoing thing, and it's not fair to put all of this pressure on them and saying, you know, these restrictions, and then they've tried to work with you, tried to meet with you, and we can't keep having these issues with developers coming in and being frustrated because they can't meet with the commissioner. I meet with people who I may not like and try to work with them, you know? I try not to not like people, but, you know, there are some out there.
I like them.
But, you know, we have to work with people and try to meet in the middle, and, you know, we, we need affordable housing. I know this is not affordable housing, but, you know, I like that they're actually going to multi-family instead of all single-family, and they're reducing the trips and reducing the school, I mean, it's just, it's just a little bit, you know, frustrating to see this happening, and it happens over and over again, and if you want the board to be on your side, you have to do your part as a commissioner to work with the developers and try to get to where it needs to be, or, and, you know, to say that there's no public here, I mean, I'd never tell my citizens that I'm going to speak on your behalf, you don't have to show up. They always have...
With all due respect, I don't think this is about my scheduling practices. I would love to provide you my calendar, so you can see how many different meetings I take with a wide variety of people, including residents from your district, and I think it's really important to know that accessibility and transparency has always been something that I hang my hat on. So I think that's very unfair, and it seems to me that this feels a little bit like sprawl your direction, not okay, sprawl my direction, okay. So I'm going to pretend, I'm going to pretend, I'm going to pretend that we are, like, maybe just focusing on this case for a second, and whatever else is going on there.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, it's just...
Would you like to offer a motion?
I would, I would like to make a motion to deny Transmittal, I mean, adoption.
Okay, is there a second? It's not a second? Okay.
Motion for approval. Second, Bonilla.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, Lady Benoma saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes six to one.